Please rise for the invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Bow heads, Heavenly Father, thank you for allowing us to see another day during these trying times, bless us as we make decisions that are crucial to the city of Shreveport and surrounding areas. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Welcome to the regular scheduled public meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals of the Shreveport Caddo Parish Metropolitan Metropolitan Planning Commission. For public hearing agenda items, if you wish to make public comments on an application, we have comment slips at the speaker's stand next to the podium. For future notification purposes, it is very important that you fill out a slip and drop it in the box when you come forward to speak. Please state your full name, mailing address, and zip code before addressing the board. We will call each case on the agenda in order and hear first from the applicant, then those speaking in favor. Ten minutes are allotted for the principal spokesperson and three minutes for each additional speaker. We will then hear from those wishing to speak against an application. Again, ten minutes are allotted for the principal spokesperson and three minutes for each additional speaker. One representative of the application may then speak in rebuttal if desired. After hearing comments on each case, the board will then immediately deliberate and vote on that case before moving on to the next case on our agenda. Please note that when the board is deliberating, members of the public are not permitted to comment. Any member of the public may request a copy of the board's decisions on a particular case by contacting our office at 318-673-6480 after 1:00 p.m. tomorrow, or by accessing our website at shreveportcaddompc.com. All ZBA decisions on variances to zoning within the city limits of Shreveport are subject to appeal to District Court. All decisions on parish variances to zoning are subject to appeal to the parish commission. All board decisions on special exception uses within the city limits of Shreveport are subject to appeal to City Council, and all ZBA decisions on parish special exception uses are subject to appeal to the parish commission. Please note that it is your responsibility to contact either District Court or the parish administrator's office about their procedures as related to the matter you are concerned with. Copies of this document and the phone numbers to contact the governing bodies are available on the table next to the podium and in the entryway to this room. As a courtesy, please remember to turn off cell phones while the ZBA is in session. The Zoning Board of Appeals values your testimony and appreciates your compliance with these guidelines. Before our first case today, I'd like to take a moment to welcome our new board member, Ms. Clarinda Henderson.
Thank you.
Look forward to working with you while we have the time to work to do so. All right, the first case on today's agenda, pardon me, we have the approval of minutes for October 20th, 2021. What do we hear?
Approved.
Second. Motion by Mr. Horn, second by Mr. Moss, to approve. Please vote. Motion carries unanimously. All right, the first case on our agenda today is case number 2121BAC, B&amp;F Engineering. Is there anyone representing B&amp;F Engineering for 3647 Hollywood Avenue? Is the staff aware of any changes in this application?
You should have, Mr. Chair, you should have a memo from Mr. Colby Sundey concerning the recommendations that the staff made in reference to the height of the materials and so forth at the locations. It appears that the company, I thought that they would be here, maybe they will walk in at the nine hour, that the company is in agreement with the staff recommendations, and we recommended approval of this requested variance.
All right, thank you, Mr. Clark. Is there anyone in the room wishing to speak for case 2121BAC, aside from the applicant? Is there anyone here wishing to speak against this case? What do we hear?
Moved to approve.
Motion by Mr. Moss, second by Mr. Horn, to approve. Please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Case number 21-11-BAP, 4519 North Lake Shore Drive. Anyone here, the Peros? Are you speaking for or against?
For.
Okay.
Nathan Razor, 5624 Lakeside Drive, Bossier City, Louisiana, 7111.
Okay.
We're trying to place a mobile home on a property. I don't, I'm not sure of the zoning. I mean, I guess we're requesting a zoning request to put a mobile home in Shreveport. I think we've submitted a site plan. I'm not really prepared. I'm with Brewer Homes. My sales guy had all this, but he's not here today, so I'm not sure if they're here either. But I think we've turned in everything. We'll have a concrete perimeter. There were some other things you guys wanted us to add. We got all that added, and there's mobile homes in the area, so we're trying to get it passed.
All right, any questions?
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
My name is Marshall Piro, and I'm here to represent my daughters. We own the property, and I'm...
Ms. Piro, pardon me, could I get your full mailing address and zip code?
Where I'm living at now?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I live at Boxdale Boulevard. I'm not too sure. I'm not from here.
Okay.
So...
We just need a good mailing address for contact.
Okay, it's 877 Box, 877 Boxdale Boulevard. I think the zip code is 1, I'm not too sure. It's 71101.
Okay, thank you very much. So you're representing your daughter?
Yes, and myself.
Okay. And just tell us briefly what you are asking for.
Okay, we have a zoning permit. We have been zoned. The land is in so many parts, like four parts, so we had to zone in one.
Okay.
And what we want to set the trailer is on the front, so I'm not too sure if they're gonna let us place it where we want it at, where the mailbox is on this, you know, in front of the trail.
Okay, I think we understand. Are there any questions from the board for Ms. Piro? All right, thank you very much, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
And Mr. Chair, for the sake of Ms. Piro, if the board is inclined to approve the application, we will get back with you to review the placement of the manufactured home on the lot.
I think we submitted a site plan.
Yeah, and we will have to approve that.
Yeah, the present site plan. I know we did a survey and some other things, and it should meet all the setbacks.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
All right, anyone else wish to speak for case 2111BAP? Anyone wish to speak against this case? What do we hear?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Horn, second by Mr. Moss. Please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Case 21-23BAC, 9100 Woolworth Road.
Hello, Mr. Berry. I'm Jerry Fielder. My address is 9329 Woolworth Road, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71129.
Thank you, sir.
And I'm here today to ask for a special exception to place a manufactured home on the corner of Woolworth Road and Walnut Hills Drive. I own the property. It's currently three lots that I purchased. I'm having it replanted into one lot by Moore and Associates. I've already submitted a site plan of the location of the manufactured home and the driveway on this piece of property. I've also submitted a petition of 10 signatures from the neighbors surrounding me, all giving their consent to the placement of this mobile home. There's already an exemption that has been granted in this neighborhood for the placement of a mobile home located at 6932 Walnut Hills Drive. There's also been another exception granted to a manufactured home next to the church on the corner of Woolworth Road and Buncombe Road. There's also 100 manufactured homes within a two-mile radius of my property, and I'm planning on complying with all the regulations to place the manufactured home on this property by putting porches on both sides and a driveway down the south side of the lot.
All right, any questions from the board for Mr. Fielder? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak for case 2123BAC? Anyone wish to speak against 2123BAC?
Yes, my name is Robert Lee Rice, Sr., at 6986 Branch Road.
What was your last name, sir?
Rice, R-I-C-E.
Thank you very much.
Okay. And then 71129. I'm speaking against that because the area, Mr. Fielder's here, he owns everything in that neighborhood, and he decided to just put a, we're not complaining about the house that he probably want to build, but we complaining about the manufacturer home he gonna build there. The house he's speaking of is in the subdivision. That was before we was indexing to the city. That lady's house got burned down, and she asked the community, would it be all right to put a manufacturer home there? On that side of Walnut Hill, you got Walnut Hill on one side, you got Branch Drive on the other side. And Walnut Hill side said, yes, you can put that mobile home there, and that's what they did. That was before we indexed into the city. We feel like, I'm speaking behalf of the church, any community, because I'm a member of Walnut Hill Saint Mary Baptist Church, and plus I reside at Walnut Hill, I mean Branch Drive, and at Walnut Hill subdivision. And I have, like, 80, 60-something, I got 21, I got 66 people to sign against it. That's from the church. And the church gave approval. We had a meeting one Sunday, and the church said, no, we don't want no manufacturer home near the church. And the people in the community, it was 21, says no. And one of the two, one of the members that in the neighborhood is Tyrone Cooks. Mr. Jared talked to him and gave him an idea, saying it's gonna be across the Woolworth Road, not on the corner of Woolworth Road and Walnut Hill. And so he threw the little confusion in on some of the people that he talked to down in the community. But he came to my house, I told him, no, flat no. Because if you start to put a mobile home, a manufactured home in the subdivision, been there almost 60, 60, almost 70 years, you gonna have that whole little block. You have a manufacturer home all around there, and we don't need that in our community. He can build a house there, we don't have no problem with that. We don't have no problem with the home on that. But we have a problem with that manufactured home that he purchased. The land belongs to him, true enough. But I think that we should have some consideration on that, on that behalf, of the community and the church. And I have proof on that. I got a letter. I think everybody should have a letter about the Walnut Hill, something about the church not agreeing to this. And plus, you should have something about the subdivision, also the 21 applicants that live in that community says no. It was confusion when he came around and said it's gonna be across the street. That before the zoning sign came up in the community on the corner. So, and that's what I said. I said, no. And the community said, no. The church says, no. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Anyone else wish to speak against case 21-23-BAC?
How you doing? My name is Brandon Moses, Sr., reside at 6971 Walnut Hill Drive, and I say no to the manufactured home, to our trailer home. Now, if the gentleman wants to put a home there, we got no problem with a house, but not no trailers, period, at all.
All right, thank you very much. Anyone else wish to speak against 2123BAC?
Good evening. My name is Charlie Cooks. I live at 6976 Walnut Hill Drive, and I said no, because I was misled about whether the house was going to be placed. And then there was another one about the zoning. I didn't know anything about a zoning until Saturday, when I seen the zoning sign up there. And I think that you should have let the neighbors in the neighborhood know something about the zoning before you put a sign or anything in the neighborhood, to let us know that y'all are planning to rezone that area. We, I've been in that area since 1959. Only thing I did was moved out and got married, and I moved back when my baby was three years old. She's 55 now. So, I've been in that neighborhood a long time, and just like Brother Rice said, we said no to the manufacturing homes. Because if you're gonna do something, tell the people the truth, and the people probably will go along with you if you tell them the truth. But try to pull schemes to get over, to get what you want. This gentleman, like Brother Rice said, he own all the land, but if you look south of the church, just on the other side of the church, there's over 200 acres on the other side of that church. Plus, where he have the cemetery at down there, he got some acres back in there. That's Pet Heaven Cemetery. He owns all that. We just don't want no manufactured home. As Brother Rice said, the hams house caught a fire, and that's the reason why, that they have that home, that they have. Man was unable to buy, rebuild his regular house in there. So, we granted him the opportunity to put a trailer, a manufactured home in there, so that he will be able to live in the same spot and wouldn't have all that overhead on him. I thank you very much for listening at me. Thank you, and good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Cooks. Anyone else wish to speak against 2123BAC? Anyone else? All right, Mr. Fielder, would you care for a rebuttal?
I'd be happy to. You know, we do own the land around that subdivision. We purchased that property probably four or five years ago. We've been good neighbors with everybody in that subdivision. I did not mislead anybody. I did not attempt to mislead anybody. I went around and I talked to all the members that were there that day in the subdivision and told them we were going to put a manufactured home right next to the church, and I got 10 signatures that day. So, we're gonna be a good neighbor. I'm gonna leave a hedge around the manufactured home, so it's not visible to the community on the south, which is the church side, and the east, which is the side facing Walnut Hills Drive into the community. So, we're gonna make it look really nice. The fact that there's already a manufactured home in that subdivision shows that there's precedent for this exemption to be granted. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
So, it appears this is a fairly wooded lot. How much are you gonna leave?
I'm gonna leave a five-foot barrier around the south and the east side of the lot, so that you can't see through. That's about an acre and a half when you combine all those lots into one lot.
And then your access will be off of Woolworth Road?
It will be. It'll be off of Woolworth Road.
Any questions for Mr. Fielder from the board?
And the main reason we're putting the manufactured home on that location is so that I can get access to city water and sewer.
You need access to city water and sewage for...
Just for that, just to that location.
That location?
Yes, sir.
In other words, across the street, you don't have...
I don't have any property across the street. The only thing we own is on the east side of Woolworth Road, which is where this lot's located.
But the larger tract doesn't have utilities run to it?
No, it does not. We're on Wells.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, what do we hear? We're open for discussion, but we need a motion to do so.
I'd like to make a motion to discuss.
Well, we have to have an approval or denial, and then you can change it if you want, after discussion. We have to have an up or down on the table.
I'll make a motion to deny the variance.
Second.
Excuse me, motion by Mr. Hendricks, second by Mr. Moss. Need discussion or statement?
I guess we can help you out a little, Mr. Chair. If you reflect back and if you studied the staff report, we went to the MPC board, and the MPC board made a recommendation to the City Council because there was a need for manufactured housing in the city limits of Shreveport. Since that has happened, we've been able to encourage homeownership in a lot of the inner-city neighborhoods where there was a lack of economic stability in order to afford a stick-built house from the ground up, but persons wanted to be homeowners and not leasing properties. And this was an opportunity to ensure that economically-challenged individuals had an opportunity to become homeowners and become better community members. In the rural-type areas of the planning limits, we've always felt that manufactured housing was acceptable because of the rural character of the areas. Generally, they're on large tracts of land, as this development is on a large tract of land, over an acre, where it has very little possibility of impacting the subdivision that's to the east of the proposed application. We took all that into consideration in making a recommendation to you, and the fact that it would be buffered, which is not a requirement, but it will be buffered, so it will not be visible from either the church or the neighborhood that backed up to it. It's not a part of that neighborhood. It's my understanding that it's separate and apart from that neighborhood. So, I just wanted to share the rationale behind the staff's recommendations that we impose design standards on manufactured homes. We make them resemble, for a lack of a better term, we make them as closely connected to stick-built housing as possible. We don't just let you go out there and throw an axle up and have a manufactured home. So, I just, just trying to help you start your discussion process. That's why we made the recommendation that we made.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Any comments from the board?
Yes, and thank you for your comments. What I'm looking at is, or listening to, is the people in this community, they don't want the house there, the manufactured home. And this is their community. The church is there, and I can understand, you know, where they're coming from, and that's why I, you know, I voted to deny the variance, or maybe make the motion to deny it.
All right. Any other comments from the board?
Yeah, and I guess just to echo, this is a subdivision, and as you can see, the constituents that I hear, I don't know if it's like a neighborhood association or whatever, but most of the time, when neighborhoods get together and decide what they want their neighborhood to look like, they pretty much have a voice to say that. And I'm looking at the diagram here, and I understand it's in the entrance, like, it looks like it's going into the entrance of that subdivision, and it's sitting back off of the property, but I just, I don't feel right about just okaying something like this. I hadn't had a chance to write out there and look at it myself, looking at the report, though it's right there into entrance to that subdivision. So, that's one of the reasons that I second that to deny.
I would like a clarification. I'm sorry. Is this actually, is this tract of land actually in the subdivision?
It is not in the subdivision. It's my understanding.
It's right there.
It's at the entrance to it, but it's not part of the original...
It's not a part of the subdivision, and if you go out, like Mr. Moss has said, you go out, you see a total different, you might gain a total different perspective, because it's separated from the subdivision. If you look at the depth of the lot, it goes basically the depth of the church, so it's separated from the subdivision. So, it has limited to no impact on the actual subdivision. And part of the rationale that we've heard, and that's part of the reason I'll be sharing with you at the end of this meeting, there is no definitive information that deems that a manufactured home depreciates property value. In a lot of instances, it actually appreciates property value, because it is more valuable than a lot of the property that is there. And I share with you lastly, just for informational purposes, you know, neighborhood participation and consent is one of the factors that you should use in making your determination, but you should also look at whether or not something is appropriate, something does not... something does not have a negative impact on a particular location, and if it will actually upgrade the actual area. Those are also things that you should consider.
All right, thank you, Mr. Clark, and thank you for your comments, Mr. Hendricks and Mr. Moss. Any other discussion? All right, the motion on the table is to deny. Please vote. Remember that a yes vote is to deny. Motion fails. Two to three. Do we have another motion?
A motion that we reconsider after making a trip out there, maybe, looking at...
Defer.
...the session.
Yeah.
One more time?
So, that would be a defer and continue motion?
Correct.
For thirty days?
Second.
All right, so the motion by Mr. Horn is to defer and continue for thirty days, giving us time to take a site survey if that is deemed necessary by the individual board members, I suppose. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, please vote. Motion carries unanimously. All right, that brings us to case twenty-one dash twenty-four dash BAC. Fifteen twenty, Texas Avenue.
Mr. Fluker? Which one is that? Case nine?
Tap nine, case twenty-one dash twenty-four dash BAC.
Mr. Fluker?
Brunch Eatery Giant Construction. Fifteen twenty, Texas Avenue.
Jake Flukas, seven four one Kangridge Place, seven one one zero eight, Shreveport, Louisiana. I'm here representing my son, Lamar Flukas. I built an eatery place on Texas at fifteen twenty Texas Street, and I just wanted to have an eatery place in a two-mile rating in that area. Thank you.
And so, just... And this is just a variance for the dining, outdoor dining area, for the space for the outdoor dining?
What'd you say?
And this is a variance for space for outdoor dining?
Yeah.
Because it backs up to the lot? The building backs up to the lot?
Yes.
Okay. All right, any questions from the board for Mr. Flukas?
Nah.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak for case BAC twenty-one dash twenty-four dash BAC? Anyone wish to speak against case twenty-one, twenty-four, BAC? What do we hear?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Moss, second by Mr. Hendricks to approve. Please vote. Motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Chair, if I may. We're very encouraged by Mr. Lamar Flukas' investments along Texas. That's a portion of Texas that's been neglected, that's been forgotten, but it's a very, very attractive portion of Texas Avenue that we have discussions about all the time. We could encourage more investors to invest in that area. It's a wonderful area. Lamar has done some incredible stuff over there.
Yes, he has.
He's not always excited about us, but he's... We maintain a wonderful relationship. But he's done some incredible things over there, and he's quite an credit to Shreveport in his own right. So, I just wanted to share that with you, that this will just be another one of the quality developments that Lamar Flukas does.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. All right, case number twenty-one dash twenty-five, BAC. We have a memo that this case has been withdrawn by the applicant. That being the case, I believe there's no action needing to be taken.
We ask that you accept the withdrawal if you don't mind, Mr. Chair.
Of course. So, do I have a... Chair puts forth a motion to accept the withdrawal?
Second.
Please vote. Case twenty-one dash twenty-six dash BAC, five oh six West eighty-third.
Good afternoon. Marbeth Hill, five twenty-five seventeen Lynn Homes, Shreveport, Louisiana, seventy eleven oh eight.
Ma'am, you may take your mask off after lecturing. There you go. Now we can hear you. Last name again, please?
Hill, H.I.L.L.
Thank you.
I was requesting to put a mobile home on the property that I purchased ten years ago, and I wanted to put a home on it. I went around to the neighborhood to make sure, and it's already mobile homes in the neighborhood.
All right. Any questions from the board for Ms. Hill? Thank you very much. Anyone else wish to speak for case twenty-one, twenty-six, BAC? Anyone wish to speak against twenty-one, twenty-six, BAC?
Hello. My name's Nora Marshall. I stay at five twenty-six West eighty-fourth Street, Shreveport, Louisiana. I've been there thirty years.
Ma'am, could you step a little closer to the microphone?
Okay.
Or pull the microphone to you?
Okay.
And tell me your last name again, please?
Marshall.
Marshall, thank you.
I stay at five twenty-six West eighty-fourth Street. I've been there thirty years. We don't have any trailers over there in that neighborhood. And I don't have a problem with trailers unless they are double-wide, because double-wide would make you look like it's a home. We are trying to beautify it the much as we can, me and my neighbor, that's my neighbor there, she would be speaking. But I purchased the land on the opposite side of me, and we're just trying to grow it up. There's no trailers over there, like I said. If we had one burnt one over there, we hoping that they put double-wide in there. We have homes down the street off of eighty-four, but we don't have any trailers.
All right, any questions for Ms. Marshall? Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else wish to speak against twenty-one, twenty-six, BAC?
Good evening. My name is Marilyn Harris. I stay at five thirty West eighty-fourth Street, Shreveport, Louisiana, seven one one zero six. I bought my home back in nineteen ninety, and like my neighbor said, we are trying to beautify our neighborhood. And we did have one trailer behind us on, I think on Harding Street, but it burnt down. But we don't have any trailers around us now. And I don't want to have a can of worms open up, that they put one trailer house back there, and then all of a sudden, we got mobile home, trailer, trailer, trailer. Because I know it was a triple homicide on eighty-second Street, and I don't want to see in the future all those trailers go on that back street back there and then crime increase while we trying to upgrade our neighborhood, beautify our neighborhood. I have a home. I own the lot beside it. I have just ran a big beautiful black fence all the way around it. And we just don't want our neighborhood value to go down. We trying to make it go up. I even just called Shreveport Green to have them to come in and try to clean up that back street back there where the trailer had burned down. And I'm just concerned if the person gonna put a trailer on the lot, if it's a double-wide trailer, I'm fine with that because it'll look more like a home than just a trailer. So, that's all I have to say.
I will say, and kind of to address what your concerns are as well as Ms. Marshall's, requirements are for these manufactured homes to have elements attached to them to make them look more like homes in the neighborhood, front porches, skirting, things of that nature, to help them look, as you say, more in line with what's in the neighborhood and not just like a trailer. Like I see the trailer there at eighty-third and Harding, and I see why a trailer like that would be an issue. But as Mr. Clark said earlier, there is evidence that new manufactured homes often do bring value to the neighborhood because of the amenities that are required to be installed with them.
I'm just concerned that we trying to upgrade our neighborhood, not downgrade it.
I understand.
And if you're gonna put a trailer, we want it clean, nice, and neat, but it look like a home.
I understand. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ma'am, before you leave...
Ms. Harris, can you come back for a moment? Mr. Hendricks has a question or a comment.
Okay.
Have you seen the home that she wants to put there?
No.
Okay, can we put that on the screen?
I don't have any example images.
It's the...
If you go down in the report...
Page eleven of our packet.
Yeah.
I don't have anything with the home on it in this.
There we go.
That's a different one.
That's a different one. It's somewhat... That's an example. That's not the particular one.
That's it right there.
It's on this side.
It's on this side. That's it, right here.
Okay, the reason why I asked for that to be put up, for you all to look at it, is, you know, like Chairman was saying, it's not just gonna be just a manufactured home just stuck on the lot. They have to do things to make, you know, make it look like it's attached, like a home. They have to put skirting around it, porch and stuff like that. So, I want you just to take a look at that before, you know, if you hadn't seen it.
We never seen it. We just rolled through there, and we just seen the single. And my vision was if they got a trailer in there, it would be like this at the door. So, we never could, I never could visualize that house would be, I mean, the trailer would be like a house to us.
Okay. Okay.
So, this is, like I said, my first time. We just get a letter to say a manufactured home.
Right.
And we want a little bit more.
Yeah, I think you will be getting a little bit more. I think that if you have any questions about that in particular, you can get with staff, and they can explain a little bit about what has to be done. And it's for the very reason that you are expressing concern about. All right? Thank you very much.
So, it's gonna sit wide?
Okay.
So, down?
It's not a trailer.
Wait, hold on, hold on, hold on. If we don't have any questions from Ms. Harris, I'll ask you to relinquish the lecturing, please.
Okay.
And then if, Ms. Hill, you may come back for a rebuttal. If there's no one else who wishes to speak against?
It's not a trailer home. I just worded it wrong. It's a manufactured home. It's more like a modular home with the siding and everything with the windows, and it's gonna be placed the way MPC said to have it put.
Right. I would just try to explain that to your neighbors who...
Yes.
A lot of people get confused with the terminology, and I just wanted them to understand. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, what do we hear?
Move to approve. Second.
Motion by, sorry, one second. Motion by Mr. Moss, second by Mr. Hendricks. Mr. Horn?
Does that mean that the ladies that are against it have changed their minds?
Well, I don't know. I think that it's...
They see it in a different light?
Exactly.
Yeah, exactly.
I think that their concern is that it not look like a traditional single-wide trailer. And I think that the requirements that are in place help to alleviate that concern. So, the motion is to approve? Please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Last case on today's agenda is case twenty-one dash twenty-seven dash BAC, nine five two Aniana Street.
My name's Richard Yancy. My wife, Mary Martha, and I are the newest owners of nine five two Aniana. This is a property that's been neglected for many years. My wife and I have been working for over five months to repair it, make it a safe, livable space for us and our six-week-old baby daughter, Mary Helen. My wife and I moved back to our hometown of Shreveport a few years ago because we both have fond memories of our childhood here. We felt like it would be a great place to raise our family. We also both turned down opportunities to live in other cities because we felt like, in many ways, being part and giving back to the community that we were raised in is more important than a bigger paycheck. We're here today to request approval for a fence variance. Currently, we're only allowed to build a three-foot-tall solid fence or a six-foot-tall transparent fence. We'd like to build an eight-foot-tall board-on-board privacy fence. First off, when we looked yesterday and today at the schedule, we saw that staff actually recommended that our variance was accepted. That's the recommendation of the staff. And then, actually, yesterday, when my wife, Mary Martha, called up, we found out, you know, she called up to see what time we'd be coming up and, you know, what's going on here. And we actually found out that our request was gonna be denied. So, find that a little confusing as to why, you know, right now, on the ZBA board site, it still says that the recommendation is for approval. So, it's just, it's confusing to us as to why, you know, at first, we'd be accepted and then, you know, at some point, denied. So, I think that, you know, we want to just kind of, still kind of go through what we believe our reasons for variance would be. First, as pointed out in the initial approval, the unique topography of our property keeps a normally conforming fence from providing security and privacy for our house. Our house is situated on Fairfield Hill. It's prominent. It also sits on a hill above Fairfield to the right. That's highlighted in this picture right here. I guess... Yeah, there you go. And so, as you can see, the, you know, the topography really hurts us and keeps us from being able to have the security and privacy that we would want that a three-foot fence would give us. The fence, as it is now, the fence line as it is now, is where those posters are right there, is actually set back seventeen and a half feet from the property line. And so, according to code, we're allowed fifteen-foot setback. So, what we'd like to do in order to make, you know, full use of our allowable space is we'd like to move the fence down two and a half feet. By doing that, it brings it down the hill a little bit, which also leaves us more susceptible to, you know, leaks of privacy and lessons are available, security from, you know, a three-foot privacy fence. You know, this loss of height, as I said, compromises the safety and security. Again, this was reason that was used in the initial approval that, you know, allowed for variance.
So, just to be clear, the staff recommends that we approve your request.
Oh, right now?
Yeah, that's what it says. Based on information contained concludes the approval of a variance.
Oh.
It says approve. Alternatively, we may take different action.
Okay.
We can either deny it, or we can approve it for a lesser height.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
There was, and the wrong staff report was updated, was loaded onto the, in the packet, the correct one, the staff did recommend denial.
Well, I've got one in my book that says approve, and I've got one on here that says approve.
Yes, the wrong staff report was updated, and I didn't get in, I didn't get that staff report until yesterday. I just had, I was not able to...
A variance of five feet, meaning from three feet, we give them a variance of five, which gets them to eight. So, what we're saying is what's on our screen is incorrect?
It is our understanding that by right, they could have three feet, and they won't...
It is our understanding that by right, they could have three feet, and they want eight feet of a solid wood fence.
Yes.
So, that is a five-foot variance.
Right.
And it does no good to have an ordinance that restricts or regulate the heights of fence and require hardships if you don't abide by the hardships. There was no definable hardship, and that was the most difficult thing that we wrestled with. There is no definable hardship that prevents the applicant from utilizing the requirements of the ordinance. And that's why we had to, in good conscience, recommend that it is denied. Now, you may choose to...
No, Mr. Clark, I understand that, but what I'm looking at on the screen is a, apparently, an incorrect staff report.
I agree.
So, do we have the corrected staff report for us?
Do we have the corrected staff report, Jasmine?
Because the staff report that's in my binder and the staff report that we have on our screen says that the staff recommends an approval of a five-foot variance based on the information warranted due to the hardship placed on the property by the natural topography of the site, as well as the lack of impact to the surrounding neighborhood. That's the recommendation that we have from staff.
As I, I would share, Mr. Chair, that it may be in the best interest of all parties' concerns that we request you defer and continue until we could get the appropriate information before you. It appears that we've just made an error, and the only thing we can do is apologize to the board for the error. But the error has been made. That is not the recommendation that staff made.
Okay.
I would like to point out that...
I would like to let...
Sorry.
Yeah, I'm letting Mr. Yancy continue his presentation.
Okay. You know, we, like I said, you know, we've spent five months, you know, repairing this home, making it so that it fits in with the neighborhood, adding value to the neighborhood by doing this repair work. And also, you know, we feel very excited to be able to, like, grow our family in this neighborhood. And again, this variance will allow us the safe, the safety, the peace of mind to, you know, let our young baby daughter, you know, be in our backyard, also provide the safety and security that we want to be able to use the allowable space as part of our property. You know, again, you know, one of the things that was included in the approved report was that in no way would this fence have a negative impact on the surrounding area. You know, my wife and I, along with our neighbors, who, you know, we talked to about going through this process, we're like, you know, why, why really does this, you know, exist? You know, and in our mind and in our understanding, a lot of the reasons for this, for this code is to keep, prevent obstacles of visibility to drivers turning left and right. Well, our property is unique in that it's on a double lot. Our home is set back from Fairfield by about sixty-five feet and over seventy feet from Aniana. So, there's, there's no, you know, obstacle to sight, you know, to seeing, you know, traffic coming to or going from Fairfield or Aniana. Also, since this is a kind of a double lot, the backyard is really a side yard. There's nothing built on this other lot. So, again, there's no impairment to the visibility of other drivers. Again, we believe that the hardship exists at the current code because this, the hill and where our house is located really allows for no privacy in our home. And, you know, again, you know, the fence that we propose offers no impediments for the drivers. The fence would have no impact on public health, safety, the welfare of the community. Not to mention, the fence was also unanimously approved by the Historical Preservation Commission in their October meeting. In fact, they praised it, saying that it would be a good addition to the neighborhood. Additionally, I think, as you all know, Fairfield's a very busy street. It averages over eighty-six hundred cars per day, according to the most recent study posted in 2020. The noise and the lights from all this traffic is, you know, a pretty big nuisance to us and to our family. And since we're located on the corner of Fairfield and Aniana, we feel like the lights, the noise from the street also create another hardship as we believe a eight-foot solid fence will mitigate some of the noise and lights from passing cars. On top of that, we also would like to point out that, you know, specifically this area of Shreveport is not the safest place. You know, like you or anybody you know, you would want the privacy and security for your family. We wanna be able to let our little girl be able to play in her backyard without having to worry that some stranger is watching her, able to grab her. And, you know, we wanna be able to have our dogs around without worrying that somebody's gonna take them. We don't feel like this is too much to ask. As you can see in this sheet right here, in the highlighted sections, that's our district. And in the last nine months, our district had more than three times as many reported instances of residential burglaries, also more residential theft, theft from auto and rape than any other district. The crime in our area, along with where our house is and the busy Fairfield Street, we feel like also poses an additional hardship to us. So, I think, you know, in summation, I think we can all agree, everybody has a right to privacy and safety on their own property. We all work really hard for, to protect our children. We believe that the current regulation prevents us from having this privacy that we, you know, we would like to have in our home. And particularly in this case, we feel like the five-foot variance that does no harm to the community, has been approved by the Historical Committee, you know, would allow us for the peace of mind and more solitude from the car noises, protection from people being able to come into our property and to, you know, watch our children play.
Thank you, Mr. Yancy. I have a couple of questions. The fence that is or was there previously was a very nice design, picket fence, scallop edge. Is that, what is the design that you're proposing? Is it gonna be cedar, bare cedar?
Yes, sir. It would be...
Is it gonna be painted white to, like the other one?
It would be a cedar plank-on-plank fence. We're planning to...
It's gonna have a cap on top.
It'll have a cap on top.
Right.
We're planning to have copper tops on each post.
Right.
And we're also gonna paint the fence green, the same color as our front door.
Green, okay.
So, it'll blend really nicely into the backyard.
Secondly, would you be amenable to a six-foot fence?
I mean, we'd really like to have an eight-foot fence.
I understand.
You know, that's kind of, we've, you know, sort of put plans in motion to try to, you know, should we pass, which we felt like maybe we would, given, you know, some of our discussions with the Historical Committee, we feel like this would be able to go forward. So, we would like to continue with the...
Well, if it's between a denial and a six-foot fence, how do you feel?
Well, I think, I mean, between a denial and a six-foot fence, yeah, I mean, yeah, six-foot fence would...
I'm just trying to see where we can go with this.
Sure, sure, I understand.
What our options might be. Mr. Hendricks?
As I look at one of the pictures of your home, it's a beautiful home.
Thank you.
Your property has a little bit of elevation to it already.
Mm-hmm.
So, I kinda see where the chairman is going with this. You already elevated some anyway, and an eight-foot fence is that much more elevated. I mean, a lower height, I'm thinking would be, you know, it's my opinion, you know, would probably suffice in your situation because, like I said, your property is elevated more than the surrounding topography there.
Well, and you know, it's that specific topography that makes it a little tricky because the back area of our house, sort of where our garage is located, also the workspace, is higher than the other areas of the house. And so, still looking, you know, driving by the house, walking by the house, you still can see back into that area where we would be, you know, coming to and leaving our cars, again, where our children would be playing, we would be working in our, in our, you know, back, backspace.
I guess my point is a six-foot fence up the hill is effectively the same screening as an eight-foot fence if it were closer to the sidewalk.
Well...
I'm just trying to find, you know, a path to success for everybody on this. Any question, any more questions for Mr. Yancy? All right. Anyone else wish to speak?
Sure.
Yeah.
I'll need your name and address, too.
My name is Mary Martha Yancy. I live at 952 Aniana. I'm, I'm his wife.
And if you'll pull the mic out.
Okay, can y'all hear me?
Yeah, there you go.
Okay. I just wanted to speak mostly just to offer my support as well and seeing how we can work together to find some sort of an agreement. And just to mostly summarize everything that my husband said, the issue, the hardship on the property, and this was kind of hard to convey in our application. Additionally, we went to get the fence permit, I think, two days before the due date of our baby. So, I scrambled for about a day just to get the, the application turned in, just to even be here today. So, perhaps we could have done a better job presenting our case, but we were a little rushed and had some other things on our mind. So, regardless, just the two main takeaways is, if I could put this picture up or that one either. I'm assuming you guys have driven up and down Fairfield numerous times, and to be honest, I bet when you saw the picture of this house, you knew, you were familiar with it. It's been surprising to us how many people have come up to us that we don't know who say, "Wow, we heard you bought this house," or, "Thank you for doing, you know, all this repair work. The paint looks great." And I, we have no idea who they are, but people keep coming to talk to us about this house because it's so prominent. It's at the top of the Fairfield Hill. All those cars driving up to it can see our whole backyard from a long distance away. And so, the hardship to, that we believe that we have is the prominence of the property itself. So, the fact that it's on the Fairfield Hill and then set slightly above it, and then the fence line would be on that slope down, we do lose, you know, some of that coverage. And so, so that's where we find the hardship. Additionally, the position of the building on the double lot, having the side yard really as our backyard, that's, that's where we would like to recreate. That's where we'd like to spend time doing backyard things, you know, having junkie project, playing with our children, you know, having my garden that's gonna get full of weeds at some point that everybody doesn't wanna look at. So, for these reasons, we'd like to have privacy just for the enjoyment of our property, but also, as my husband said, for the protection of the things and within our property. Of course, the most special being our child and hopefully other children. So, that's all I'd like to say. And thank y'all for hearing our case.
Thank you very much. And since there's no one else in the chamber, I assume no one wishes to speak against this case. What do we hear? Staff, administration has requested that we consider a defer and continue to let staff report be amended or be corrected. Alternatively, we could approve or deny, as always.
I'll make a motion that we listen to the MPC and defer it.
All right, Mr. Horn has a motion to defer and continue for thirty days. Do you have a second? Motion fails for lack of a second. We have another motion?
I'll make a motion that the variance be accepted with the stipulation that the fence can only be six feet tall.
So, that would be a three-foot variance.
Yes. From a five to a three-foot variance, correct.
Motion by Mr. Hendricks to approve a variance of three feet, thereby allowing a six-foot board-on-board solid fence.
Mr. Chairman.
One second, sir. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Moss. Mr. Clark?
I just continued to hear the applicants talking about the backyard, and I'm sort of looking at a Google picture, but I don't know if we actually got into the backyard and made a true assessment of what impact this fence would have had on the, the eight-foot fence would have on the protection of the backyard for the applicants. And that was one of the reasons that I just suggested that you do a defer and continue to allow the planner, although we do on-site visits, I don't know if he was able to get into this area to really look at the impact of, of the sixty-eight-foot fence. And that was the, the only reason that we were suggesting to, to defer and continue. And there may be a time, time limitation on the property owners that would not allow for that, but that was the only reason we were asking for that.
All right, thank you, Mr. Clark. Motion on the table, Mr. Hendricks, is to approve a three-foot variance, second by Mr. Moss. Discussion, Mr. Hendricks?
Yes, I wanna just, fences can be put up different ways. At the highest point of your property, you know, my suggestion, or my idea would be a six-foot fence. And as it goes around to maybe the lower part of your property, the fence height could be exactly the same height as it is in the six-foot area. When you get around to the lower part of your house, the fence, of course, can be...
Right.
I don't know what you call that, but is that...
Keep the top level.
Keep the top could be level from the six-foot high, the highest height in the, and all the way around to the backside where it was lower, it could be the same height. So, maybe that six-foot around there, you get to the lower part, it's taller, but it looks more presentable than a fence going up and down your property.
I don't know that there's a way to word that.
I don't know.
So, in actuality, when it goes around the back, it might not be six foot. It's gonna actually be higher.
Right.
Because it's gonna be longer.
Right. But it would look straight from the property, the street line, it would look like it's the same height.
One second.
Oh, no.
I'm sorry. Unfortunately, our rules don't allow you to come back.
Oh, 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 shoot, okay.
We continue to come up with ways to try to address the concerns of the applicants and that we think that there's some, a different approach that would make your approval of the five-foot variance acceptable. We can't do that today, and that's why I keep looking at them, but I know they can't speak. But they may have a time restraint that would not allow us to have a deferral and continue. But we're thinking that we can facilitate exactly what they're trying to accomplish if we had some additional time. And since this was, this is, since this case was not exactly as we would have wanted it to be presented to you anyway, that, that's just a second reason for requesting that we defer and continue. But I would request if you would see if that's...
And I will, I will, just briefly, would you be, Mr. Yancy, would you be amenable to a thirty-day deferral? Just a nod or a shake of the head would be sufficient?
Can, can, can we offer some comments?
Well, we currently have a motion on the table. We can't really table that. We'd have to go out of order to allow them to come back to be accurate with our rules, so...
Let's talk about, don't we go out of order?
I have a question for our attorney. If we have a motion on the table and we'd like to go out of order to recall them, is there a mechanism for us to recall them to the microphone?
Not through the rules. You would have to make an exception on the motion before you...
Or withdraw, or withdraw the motion.
Withdraw the motion.
If you have a motion on the floor, you have to act on that motion before you proceed with it.
But may he, maybe, may he withdraw his motion and...
He can decide.
So, if you withdraw and the motion go out of order?
Withdraw my motion. Move to withdraw.
All right, so, motion is withdrawn. A new motion is to go out of order to allow the Yancys to come back to the podium for discussion.
We were just gonna say that we were good with...
Hold on, hold on. We gotta vote. Sorry. So, the motion on the floor is to go out of order to allow the applicant to come back to the microphone. Please vote. Motion carries unanimously. All right, Mr. Yancy or Ms. Yancy can come back to the microphone. So, the question we have is, is would it... So, the question we have is, is would it, would it hamper your plan significantly if we deferred this case for thirty days till next month to allow staff and you to get together to try to come up with a plan to get what will work for us and will be what, closer to what you want? Otherwise, I think you're going to be stuck with what we say, which may force the fence to be six-foot as it follows the ground, right? Whereas if we can work with staff, we might be able to come up with something more closely aligned with what Mr. Hendricks was suggesting.
Oh, okay, which is follow...
Just a level, a level, a level top.
A six-foot level top from...
Yeah.
The code, I don't want to speak unless it's...
Anyway, basically, we just, we're trying to get options here.
Yeah, and I don't agree with that. That's why I'm asking if, in all possible, we can have further discussion as you're suggesting, Mr. Chair.
Right. We just have to vote one way or the other today, but we can't have the discussion today.
Sure.
It has to happen outside of this meeting.
Okay. Just to circle back and for some clarity, are we just talking about doing a six-foot privacy fence, approving that today, or tabling?
We're talking about tabling the entire case until next month so that we can potentially come up with a plan that may be more beneficial to you, but also meet, more closely meet with our, with our code.
So, otherwise, you guys would take a, make another motion and have a vote?
If you give us a little bit more time, it, it might work out to where it'd be closer to what you might want.
It may be in your business interest.
All right, well, yeah, well, we, yeah, so...
Right now, if we do it, it's going to, we recommend a six-foot.
Okay. Well, I think in light of that, yeah, we would agree to a thirty, thirty-day.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right. So, we, also, now, do we need to go, motion to go back into regular, or can we continue with a motion to approve, I mean, defer and continue?
You can now put a motion forward.
Thank you. So, do we have a motion to, the chair puts forward a motion to defer and continue for thirty days?
Second.
Second by Mr. Moss. Discussion? Please vote.
Do you guys want to comment?
All right. That brings us to the end of our public hearing. Mr. Clark, you have any reports for us?
Just, just real briefly, Mr. Chair, you were not here yesterday, but I shared with those board members that were a part of the, the pre-briefing meeting that as we slowly come to the end of the year 2021, we are real optimistic that by your meeting in December, we will have definitive answers as to what is the role of the zoning board of appeals going forward into 2022. We have not mentioned to you the, to appoint the nominating committee and nominate the officers because we just don't know exactly how the, the city and the parish are going to approach the, the boards and the actual jurisdiction that we will be a part of. Once we get all those things done, it's going to be a little, a little chaotic. I think it could have been handled a whole lot better, but that's, that's just a personal opinion, but it's going to be a little chaotic. But we're going to keep you informed, when we are informed. We are just as much in the dark as you are right now. Nobody's talking to us. Nobody's sharing any information with us. There are just some implications that, what might possibly happen. So, we will get that information to you as soon as we possibly can, and that's all I have today, Mr. Chair.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Clark. So, we do not need to appoint a nominating committee at this time?
We don't feel, we shared the same thing with the MPC board, that it may be inappropriate because we don't know, some of you are appointed by the parish, some of you are appointed by the city, exactly what the structure will be.
All right. Thank you very much. Any comments from the board? Thank you all for your time. I appreciate it. We'll see you next month, and we are adjourned.